Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Workshop, the City of Fort Lauderdale City Commission, with a joint workshop with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And we appreciate, sorry we're starting so late. But, uh, so let me turn this over. First of all, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the role of the commission?
Yes, Commissioner Herbst. Vice Mayor Gillesman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trentalles.
Here. We have full attendance for the commission. And who would like to do the, the role, Madam Chair?
Good morning. My name is Susan Sprague, and I chair the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And I would like to introduce the people who-
Are you cold, Susan?
Pardon?
Are you cold?
No, no, I love this.
Okay.
I have a sweater, just in case.
Are you cold, Mayor?
Yes.
The mayor's cold. The mayor's cold.
Should've brought a shawl with me, I don't know.
All of our committee members are here with the exception of one, which is Chantel Gyrem, the vice chair. And Agostina Sklar, our latest addition to the committee, is on via Zoom. She had a conflict. But otherwise, um, we welcome our team, Commissioner Pittman, William Condon, Willie McKay, Roderick Newkirk, Arminia Figaroa, Rich DeGirrolamo, Amanda Wilson. Thank you all for your incredible work on affordable housing. So I'd like to just do a quick, um, purpose of our committee and the workshop and some background information. Because we see, receive state housing initiative partnerships funds from the state of Florida, we were required to establish an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that annually recommends specific actions or initiatives to encourage or facilitate affordable housing while protecting the ability of the property to appreciate in value, or, in other words, to create and preserve affordable housing. We review all sorts of documents, policies, procedures, regulations, ordinances, and such to evaluate their impacts on the provisional of, of affordable housing. And then we look to recommendations that can modify or repeal existing policies, creation of exceptions, and adoption of new policies. The ship program requires us to review eleven specific areas of possible affordable housing incentives included in the ship statute at a minimum. And two incentives are required to be in place in all ship jurisdictions, which are expedited permitting and in ongoing process of review. In 2022, Broward County's proportion of low-income cost-burdened residents was thirty-four point two percent overall, the second highest in Florida behind Miami-Dade. Households that pay more than thirty percent of their household income are considering housing cost burdened. In 2024, it remains second highest, but it grew to forty-two percent. Over half of the renters were cost-burdened, and about one-third of homeowners were cost-burdened. And as was mentioned in the October fifteenth commission meeting where our report was accepted, market forces are not working, and the supply of affordable housing is not meeting demand. Job opportunities are skewed towards low-wage occupations, creating demand for low-cost housing. And as an example, expanding the convention center and constructing a new hotel will add about a thousand local jobs, but at the lower end of the wage scale, increasing the need for affordable housing. Broward County's area median income in 2024 was eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Eighty percent of AMI is considered the upper limit for low income, or seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. At that income level, only half of home rentals are affordable. And at sixty percent of AMI, only twelve percent of rental homes are affordable. And as mentioned previously, supply is shrinking. Housing at the low end is disappearing due to inflation, luxury development, refurbishment, and short-term rental conversions. Governmentally subsidized housing is designed for moderate income, working families, not those with very low incomes. By 2043, Broward is projected to lose approximately thirty percent of its assisted housing units. The A-hack members reviewed all required and additional recommendations and strategies presented in the report submitted to and accepted by the City Commission in October. And we subsequently ranked the strategies in order of importance to discuss with you. So we'll discuss the top three recommendations today, ask that the commission provide direction on these specific items, and assign to city manager and staff the task of analyzing, evaluating, and implementing these specific recommendations. The first strategy to discuss is expedited permitting, which most governments address. The second and third strategies, which are impact fee waivers and reduced parking requirements, are less frequently mentioned by other Florida cities and counties in their report. Our first recommendation is to discuss expedited process of development approvals. That functioning process for expedited permitting for affordable housing units reduces time and helps avoid setbacks by designating a staff member to shepherd a development through the process. The requirement to expedite permits extends to all reviews and approvals, including site plan review, zoning hearings, and special approvals. We are required to assess the processing of approvals of development orders or permits for affordable housing projects that they are expedited to a greater degree than other projects. And that requires that affordable housing developments are placed ahead of other developments. And Mr. Battle is here to correct me in case I say, misstep anything or am not clear. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, all permits must be submitted digitally, meaning paperless, through Lotter Bill Plan Room. Development Services Department, known as DSD, has a team of three business assistant coordinators dedicated to solving permitting problems called the Permit Solution Team, which provides customer approach to navigating the process, including but not limited to zoning permitting, business tax, and construction. This team works closely with DSD to ensure permitting is hassle-free and efficient and can assist every type of customer. And they are committed to complete all permit reviews within thirty days or less of receipt of permit application. Our A-hack recommends that the city should combine their three sources of expediting permits from DSD Building Services and the review process. Section twenty-nine dash five, under ordinance C ninety-five point six four, under one umbrella, using the Permit Solutions Team, designated a few of those team members solely for the purpose of expediting affordable housing over the other housing permits. Is there any discussion?
So let's stop there.
Mm-hmm.
And let's talk with, Al, do you want to come up and give your response? Have we, have we, um, identified possible ways in which to expedite the permitting process for affordable housing projects?
I'm acting like I haven't been up here before, if I'm not pressing the button. So I think the chair identified exactly how we've set up the department from a customer service approach right now. So the Permit Solutions Team comment that she made is, um, a group that we created. We already had a couple of business assistance coordinators. At the fiscal year twenty-three, we added a third business assistance coordinator. And we also designated several administrative staff members to create this Permit Solutions Team. So that team has effectively been in place when we went to the online permitting approach back in January of two thousand twenty-four. I'm gonna get to-
As you said, but that's for everybody, right?
That is for everyone. I was gonna get to kind of the, the affordable housing part. So as, uh, as she mentioned earlier, too, um, in, in the city's ordinance and according to state statute, we, we had to have a policy in order to designate that those permits would be expedited. So part of the creation of this team was to have non-licensed building staff be able to shepherd projects through the process, including affordable housing permits. So as you can imagine, when we didn't have dedicated staff, in many cases, they were trying to reach the building official, um, a, a, a chief inspector for particular discipline or even department leadership. I've got an issue with the permit. This is what these people do all day. They have an ability to be contacted via email, or they have their own hotline in which customers can, can contact them. So the first thing is, we created, we created the infrastructure in order to address the problem. The second thing for that is that, um, she also mentioned that plans are now all online digital format. So that took the paper process and created a lot of efficiency for us. As a matter of fact, we've pretty much got an adoption rate of all permits going to the online portal. Uh, we have about a nine, almost a ninety-five percent adoption rate of people using the online portal for the submission of plans and permits. Those who bring them in by paper, we still scan them, so we haven't totally eliminated people from being able to take advantage of our process. But that team is, is focused on solutions for affordable housing projects. Now, the third thing to that, Mayor, and, and members of the commission is, is that there, there would then also be the assumption that we have, uh, an overload of affordable housing projects that are coming through our doors. And that, that is also unfortunately not the case yet. But when we do have those, there are a couple of things that we do. Um, I would say even the building officials are on, um, task with this, is that we ask that there be a pre-development meeting with development staff to help create a situation where a someone from Permit Solutions is assigned to their project, so they have a case manager. Because that's really the purpose of why we created the team, to be basically case managers for these particular projects. And also an opportunity for them to follow up, because not everyone is familiar with the permitting process. Even if they can see it and it's transparent online, they may not understand what is being said in terms of the comments from reviewers and from, and from a public standpoint, what we're being, um, what's being requested and what we're asking for from the applicant. So that, that pre-development process or, or meeting is supremely important to the process. And the third, third thing that we do is, we, we have project meetings, and in some cases, we're meeting with either HCD or CRA to, to have a follow-up loop to check where we are with projects that are in that loop. So there are two affordable housing project types that I would say we track, um, at the same time, more, one more than the other. The single families that come in, you may have them come one at a time, you may have them come in a group. Those are fairly easy, fairly consistent. We are usually on spot with being able to generate a review and comment within thirty days or lot, or less from the, from the initial application submittal. The larger ones, the multifamily mixed-use developments that have those affordable components, those pre-development meetings are crucial to being able to navigate how to get through the process. In many cases, they may have a private provider attached to that project, meaning that they may only use us for either inspection or plan review. They may not use us for the entirety of the project approval. But in other, but in, in, in short, we have the infrastructure in place to address the issues as they come up. I would say there aren't a lot of affordable housing projects, but as that pipeline gets bigger, we think we are ready to address them as they would come into the door.
So are we saying then it, that, that particular item is not so much an issue with our city? Yet it's been identified as the number one complaint?
I, I don't know if it's a complaint. I think they're asking for us to be more formal in how we structure the organization to address the issue. And what I'm responding to is, is that I think we stepped ahead of what they're saying, and we've set up Permit Solutions. Our staff is very familiar with the statutory and the ordinance requirement as it relates to, to affordable housing, expedited review. We probably need to be more in communication in terms of when projects come into our house to be able to, to tell them what the status of those projects are. But I, I, I don't think that there's a, a complaint here. I, I'm not hearing complaint. I think they wanna, they wanna better understand how we're managing that process and to communicate with them more about the management of that process.
That is correct. We are not complaining.
So it seems to me that it is happening, and we do have systems in place. And that we have, I have not heard anyone yet in the affordable housing arena that had complained about that. I hear other people complaining, but not the affordable housing people. Ben, did you want to say something?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I think we're heading, do you feel like we're heading in the right direction around expedited review?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great. So, Al, just a question maybe to Susan is, so I'm on the website, the city's website, Affordable Housing Incentives website, and where we list like the bonuses, the density bonuses, Al, height bonuses. I might be missing it, but I'm not seeing the expedited review as kind of part of the incentive package listed. So could we just make sure that's listed somewhere, Susan? I'm not sure.
So which part of the, if I may ask, which part of the site are you on?
Affordable Housing Incentives, it's called, under Urban Design and Planning. I thought there was something there for expedited.
I might be missing it, Al.
But I'm not gonna, I'll look at it and we'll confirm, but I thought we did have that in there.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's great.
All right, so we're batting a thousand so far, Susan. All right, let's keep it going.
I just want to say this, I don't, as I said, I don't think this was meant, they weren't meant to be a criticism of the current process. I think they're asking for us to communicate with them more. So the only thing I was gonna say in that, having those, we originally only had one business assistant coordinator several years ago. Andre Kraus, if you're familiar with Andre. We added Mike Maloney a couple of years after, and we just added a young man by the name of Chris Parassino right before we went to the paperless process. Having three of them has been probably one of the best operational decisions that we made. There is so much activity that having that extra person or the two extra people allows for us to have one of those people be their liaison. So that would be the next thing we're gonna do, is attempt to have at least one or two of them maybe circle their meetings from time to time just to give them updates or to just listen, you know, be an ear at the door to hear what their issues are. If they can provide assistance, then they can bring that feedback back to management, and we can make some changes if need be.
And, Al, is that even possible on the website to like list those expedited reviewers for?
They're not reviewers.
Whatever their title is.
Yeah, I just want to be clear.
Employees.
Employees. So they do have their own page. If you go to Permit Solutions, they're not listed individually, but they do have a page up that shows their picture. And there's a reason why, and they have contact information, and there's a reason why we didn't give their contact information out. I mentioned earlier, they have a hotline. A hotline and an email address.
Just give them, Ben.
And I will tell you that that hotline rings all day long, and they get emails, unlimited amount of emails. So sure, they're there and visible. And I would say almost anybody who's in the development industry in Fort Lauderdale, they know them by name and know their numbers and email addresses by heart.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, our second recommendation regards fee waivers for the development or construction of affordable housing. And impact fees are the main type of fee that can be modified for affordable housing with the intent of reducing the cost of development. And they include fees for concurrency capacity for roads, parks, infrastructure, and schools. The modification deferral waiver of other local governmental fees should also be assessed. These fees include informal reviews, reviews of site plan, landscaping, plating and subdivision, et cetera, as well as building permits and water sewer and wastewater connection fees. In looking at different counties and cities throughout Florida, there's a variety of items addressed here. Some, Orlando exempts ADUs from school impact fees. And based on AMI, they provide waivers for parks' transportation and school impact fees. In Miami-Dade, residential developments providing affordable housing or a portion thereof are exempt from most impact fees. There's transportation impact fee deferrals and refunds for workforce and affordable housing. Gainesville uses a program revenue to pay water and wastewater connection charges and several things like that. So what AHAAC is recommending is that we utilize alternate methods of fee payments for affordable housing. And that could be including TIF funds, if TIF funds are indeed returned back to the cities, in lieu fees, in other sources that are deposited into affordable action or elimination of impact fees for qualified affordable housing projects. When we went to the Affordable Housing Conference last August, we were hearing stories of nonprofit builders that had a seven-layer financing strategy and were looking for all sorts of different waivers and such. And that could make or break the financial capabilities. I'm not saying that everybody needs it, but it would be helpful if there was an ability to help with these type of fees and consider that. So discussion?
You have a comment? Yeah, just for my own knowledge, Susan, are we, is the city able to waive impact fees?
I might ask the attorney to assist with that. It would depend on, I guess, the ordinance. And some of these fees obviously are levied by others, so school board has, you know, the school impact fees.
Yes, Florida Statute one sixty-three point three one eight zero one does allow counties and municipalities and special districts to waive impact fees, and they do not have to offset the impact of those waivers. But in this case, you would have to do a full study in terms of updating our levy of impact fees. It would include in that study these units in terms of the assessment of this impact and so forth. But then you can, in that ordinance adopting it, actually waive the, waive or exempt affordable housing from impact fees under the statute.
So that study would have to show that the money is not necessary in order to accommodate the new residents? I mean, I'm concerned that here we are, here we are siphoning money off of our water and sewer fund income in order to allow for affordable housing. Here we go, here we go again. Is that what we're saying? What are we doing here?
The study would be a general study about the impact of developments in general. And so you wouldn't, you wouldn't, there's no cost accounting for this waiver at all.
There's no cost accounting, but is it a needs assessment?
No.
So what is the, what is the study about then?
This has to do with the waiver, the imposing of the impact fees in general. Last year, the legislature updated the impact fee legislation requiring a study within a particular time period of adopting changes to your impact fees ordinances.
So I'm missing something here. So what exactly is the study intending to prove in order to waive the impact fee for affordable housing?
So it's kind of two separate things. If we are to change our impact fee ordinance, we have to do a study that's separate and apart from whether or not you're providing the waiver. Because you're doing the waiver, you have to amend your ordinance, and because you're amending your ordinance, you have to do the study.
And what does the study intending to show?
Shows the nexus between the impact of new development and the fee that you're looking to levy and assess.
Well, of course, right, we cannot levy an impact fee unless it's intended to provide a service or accommodate a need.
Correct.
And so in terms of water and schools are concerned, I think Susan pointed out that that's not our decision to make. But what other impact fees are there?
So I know we have parks. So again, I assume that you could keep the water and sewer one and just, you know, look at the waivers as it relates to the parks one. I know the schools have one. I think those are the only ones currently. And yeah, those are the two that we have.
We don't have a traffic impact fee anymore, do we?
No.
No. Okay.
If I can add, the recommendation is not to eliminate or waive them necessarily, but a reduction or elimination. But the main item, number one, is having alternative methods to pay these fees. And we're looking to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is starting to get some money coming in. If there's a worthy project that really just needs a bump up, then perhaps using those funds.
Subsidize it with that. Okay, I get it, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, could I ask? Susan, you mentioned waiving connection fees. Can we do that as well, Dewane? Are you able, do we have the flexibility for connection fees, wastewater and water?
Actually, while you're looking that up, I'm gonna believe the answer is no, because all those are pledged revenues for bond covenants that we've got issued for the construction that we've done for that system. So there's some restrictions on our ability to do stuff with, there's also some state law to summarize, no free water. So there's no discounts allowed, that's why we pay the water bill like everybody else. So I think when you start looking at bond covenants is where we're gonna run into some trepidation with that.
Yeah, the no free water obviously is the reason when we're looking at our credit program, why we can't, you know, wipe that out. The general fund could always subsidize and pay that on behalf of a project. Or, as Susan had mentioned, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or TIF dollars. So it would be not waiving those amounts, but having an alternate revenue source to fund it.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what we could possibly do to, a great point, Commissioner Herbst, about the, you know, still funding it, but possibly incentivizing through other funding sources. So is that something we can?
We can evaluate on a case-by-case basis, based on the revenue source, whether or not there is an ability to provide such a waiver or offset.
Okay.
And we'd probably have to just establish a program and parameters and bring that forward. And just as an FYI, we're currently doing the once every five years comprehensive water and sewer rate studies. So we can ask the folks that we're working with on that what experience they have with those type of programs.
Great, so we'll look at impact fees, is that right? And connection fees as well. Okay, great, thanks. Go ahead, Susan, thanks.
You're not allowed.
Okay, so just wanted to make a quick comment around our perspective just of this conversation in general. I think, we think it's important to be an ally to the private sector. I think if anybody touches development right now, some of these developers in their own backyard are having a really hard time penciling market rate projects. So for us to incentivize them or outside people to come in and develop affordable here, I think we really need to focus on being an ally and perhaps subsidizing some of this. Now, we talked about utilizing the budget instead of waiving the impact fees because of our sewer water situation in the city. We want to do it through our account. And a lot of that money in the future is probably gonna come from in lieu of fees. So that's sort of, if you know what that is, that's sort of gonna create a cycle, which is fine. What we want are affordable units and affordable housing. So when a market rate guy comes along and says, well, you need me to do ten, fifteen percent affordable, I'm just gonna pay a million bucks, a couple million bucks, or whatever it is, and that'll go into our account, but they won't build the affordable units. So for us, yeah, sure, we get money, but that doesn't help affordable in the town. So now what that'll do is that'll come in the account, and then hopefully the next time we come to them and say, hey, instead of your two million dollars in impact fees, we'll subsidize that. And I think that's good, but that's sort of the cycle that will happen, and that's the way that it'll get funded. It'll come from somebody that chose not to build the units, and then hopefully we incentivize the next guy to build the units, because that's what we want. If we have five hundred million in account and nothing to use it for to get affordable units, then it's pointless. So we really need to make sure we're incentivizing them to build affordable and get affordable units, not just avoid it and go to market. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's what the whole conversation is.
So.
Being an ally to the.
So it becomes sort of a package of incentives, because
Sure.
within the CRA, we're often providing incentive money, okay?
Exactly.
And outside the CRA, we have a program of tax abatement. That's another incentive. So it just depends on how much, how many incentives we can offer. I don't know how big this fund is going to be, your Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I don't know how much money is gonna be accumulated, but clearly that's a, that's a.
We have an ongoing document, don't know if it's ready to be shared yet, Susan's working hard on it, but that's something we could probably communicate at some point.
Okay, so because I know it was stagnant for a very long time.
Sure.
So I don't want us to rely on something in theory and in reality it not be there.
Sure, and I don't think we should. I'm just saying that the tone around this is really to incentivize. And in my conversations with developers that are local and ongoing, doing projects right now, the two things that they kept saying were the taxes, which we aren't really able to deal with, of course, that's the big thing. They want the break on taxes long-term for their OpEx. And then these impact fees, trying to get them waived down. You know, it does incentivize them and incentivize their equity partners. If people know, hey, Fort Lauderdale's great to work with, then equity partners will come in and start spending money on affordable projects.
Okay, well, it's good to know that. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Moving on to the third and last recommendation, it regards reduction of parking and setback requirements, is the title. Some housing developments, including those focused on housing for elderly residents or people with disabilities or near transit, may benefit from a reduction in the number of parking spaces required by the land use code. Parking requirements can impose relatively high costs on affordable housing developers and should be assessed on a neighborhood basis, especially if there is on-street parking available. And per section forty-seven point two zero of Ordinance C eighteen dash forty-five, the standard requirement for affordable housing unit use is one parking space per dwelling unit, which can be reduced, providing that a restricted covenant must be executed and recorded, ensuring that the affordable units remain affordable for a minimum of ten years by restricting the maximum sale or rental price of an affordable housing unit. Again, in looking at some of the other municipalities and counties, they have reduced these down to point five space per unit that are affordable in Sarasota.
Where do these people park?
I know, I know. Back when you sat on our AHAAC, we were talking about this as well. And I'm not saying necessarily eliminated, although several cities have eliminated parking minimums.
Well, in Flagler Village, we had that for everything, right? Remember? We had no parking, zero parking requirements, but they still, they still provided parking. But now we're competing for on-street parking, which is also limited, especially for visitors and patrons of our commercial enterprises that are located within Flagler Village. You know, people have no place to park. So these places can't stay in business if the customers don't have a place to park. So I'm just, I'm concerned, and I raise that concern again about reducing the parking requirements, because again, people still drive cars. So if you have a three-bedroom unit, okay, and one parking lot or space assigned to that unit, are we kidding ourselves and thinking that there's public transportation out there to accommodate the residents of that apartment? That's a rhetorical question. We have to be able to respond to that in some way. And I'm not sure if parking, one parking space per unit is going to be the best approach to trying to reduce cost to the developer. Anyone else want to comment on that? Commissioner, you have any thoughts on that? I know this has been a topic of conversation at the committee.
Well, we've been talking about it in detail, like you've just mentioned. And weighing out the pros and the cons of it. And understanding that we are seeing some opportunities where those who may rent may not necessarily have a vehicle. So that gives an opportunity to free up a space. And then also, we talked about those who will definitely have those vehicles that will need them. Because at first, the conversation, when I, my concern about this topic was, are we presuming that because it's affordable housing, that they may not have a car, they may not need the parking? So we, you know, we cleared that conversation, knowing that everyone, most people do have transportation. We live in South Florida, people are driving. So with that, being able to get to a balance, if it's one or is it one and a half? Is that's a space of one and a half? Is that's a, a space of one and a half? But being able to reduce it where it's a balance, where you'll still be able to offer the parking. If there's three units, three apartments, I mean, three rooms in a unit, maybe offering them the two instead of the three, working that out with the developer, where it's already a formula in place for that multiple unit.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, I definitely, I think it is a balancing act. And I think it would be helpful to explore, can there be a partial reduction for a further incentive?
Well, right now, we have one unit per, one, one parking space per unit. That's the standard now in the city. So we're looking to do, what, three-quarters of a space per unit? Come up here, please, Chris.
Mr. Cooper.
Good afternoon. Chris Cooper, Acting Assistant City Manager, Mayor Commission. So I think with anything we deal with parking throughout the city, our code is somewhat context specific. We have some TOD areas where we give a deeper reduction. You know, we do allow studies for residential or commercial that if they can show mitigation, alternative methods, certain things that make a reasonable case that parking can be reduced, we'll, we'll, you know, pursue a parking reduction, which goes to planning and zoning. So I, I think to continue in that, it would need to be context specific. You know, every development may not be suitable to do a reduction, but there may be situations, again, presence of transit, context of the area. Maybe it's more walkable, maybe it's not. You know, that a parking reduction could be worthwhile. But it would need to be based on what that context is. I wouldn't want to cast a wide net and just say, let's do three-quarters for every unit everywhere.
Well, we, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, slightly off of the subject of affordable housing, but we as a commission, most recently, talked about medical buildings where we reduce the parking opportunities.
Yeah, for businesses, yes, right.
But that also is a conversation where initially, we thought it would not fit. But we got to a point where we were able to balance it for the fit and the need of that particular unit, that medical building. So that's the direction we should consider moving forward with affordable housing as well, case by case.
Case by case basis, okay.
Chris, one, one of the things that I've seen in some of these projects that have reductions in parking is that there are virtually no guest parking spaces. Right? One or two guest parking spaces. And then somebody has a party and 20 people show up. And it has been my experience that the folks that are showing up for, you know, parties or so forth are the ones that are likely to park all over people's lawns and illegally park and everything else. It's not people that live in the building that tend to become, you know, somewhat abusive of the neighborhood. It's the guests that are coming for a party. Their attitude is, I'm only gonna be here for a couple hours. I'm gonna park on your lawn. Those are the complaints that I get whenever I see parking reductions. People do have parties, and folks usually drive over. Not everybody is showing up on Uber when they go to a party. They probably should, but they don't. So those, those tend to generate, most of the complaints that I've gotten from people is a lack of guest parking. How do we address that?
Yeah, so a lot of that, what we see in my experience has been with Townhome and Cluster Developments, where you've got garages, and you've got a garage, and then we require two driveway spaces. And then you get the, the one or two guest spaces for the entire property. And the intent behind that is that you have, for your own unit, you have the garage and you have the driveway for you and your guests. You know, that you have a couple extra just for, you know, the few that may come by. Problem is that people don't use their garages for parking a lot. They use their garages a lot for washing machines, storage, and the like. So the driveway becomes the primary parking, and then the guest spots get full. A lot of those also have on-street spaces that are built in around them, but they're not dedicated for the project. They're open to the public, and as things grow and communities get bigger, those parking spaces get taken up more just for day-to-day use. So yes, it is an issue.
And candidly, those on-street parking spaces are few and far between, depending on the neighborhoods you're in too.
Right, so you do have issues with that overflow and the number of guests that can come for different things. Certainly, holidays, parties, things of that nature.
Do we have anything on the books right now that specifically calls out affordable workforce?
Just the reduction down to one unit per, one space per dwelling unit.
Okay, so could we explore a, a further reduction?
Well, yeah, we do have the reduction opportunity where if somebody can prove that there's mitigation available to them, that they could have less parking spaces on-site. That may be through an off-site parking agreement, that may be through shared use. That may be mitigation through transit opportunities that are available nearby, like a transit-oriented development. So what'll happen is the, the applicant hires a traffic engineer, makes the case, does a study. We review it. We have another traffic engineer review it to see if it makes sense, and it goes through an approval process. So there's already paths available for that. You know, if we wanted to craft something specifically for affordable housing, potentially, but not necessarily just because it's affordable, because there are mitigating circumstances that allow for a deeper reduction.
So in other words, an affordable workforce housing developer could fly under the existing statute seeking a reduction and make the case based on transit orientation and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, one thing you could do with a lot of our affordable housing incentives, we've tried to reduce the process. You've heard about the permitting and review process earlier, but we also have processes where if they're doing affordable units in certain areas of our city, like Northwest Rack or South Rack or Uptown, they have a call-up rather than coming to commission. Or they have a lower-level review just to kind of create a shortened time period of approval. Potentially, having a more administrative reduction process could maybe save some time and make it an easier process. Could be a consideration we could look at and bring back.
Okay, yeah, I think if that's our major exploring that.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of, having a call-up rather than a review. All right, I think those are little nuances, but certainly, you add them all up, and they really help a developer in trying to move forward a project, especially since carrying costs are, are, are heavy. You know, when you, every month, you're paying interest on your construction loans, and if, as soon as you opened it up and have income. Sometimes I don't even know how some of these building contractors make money. I mean, they're building these buildings for three years, and they're, they're making no money on this. So, all right, anyone else have any questions?
I do. Thanks, Mayor. I agree with everyone saying about flexibility. I think it's really important. So Chris, let me ask you a question, because you'll know better than most of us. With regards to the Live Local Act, how much activity of this are you seeing? And then all of the assurances that we have in place, whether we're talking about parking requirements, any of our requirements, where do they stand with regards to any kind of Live Local projects that are coming down the pike? Do they have to comply with any of our requirements? And I know, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're ever gonna even see these Live Local projects. Don't they just stay with staff and not come to the commission?
Yeah, that's correct. So Live Local was adopted by the Florida Legislature a couple of years ago. There were some minor amendments to it last year. Basically allows the development of an affordable residential project in any mixed-use, commercial-industrial zoning district within the city. The project does go through an administrative review process. It doesn't have a higher level approval through Planning and Zoning Board Commissioner call-up. The project will have to meet all of our zoning requirements, so setbacks, stepbacks, those sorts of things. The only thing that the Live Local Act does provide relief for is density and height. So the density available to a developer under a Live Local project is the highest density that's available to anybody within the city. So right now, we do have areas where there's unlimited density available. There's certain controls like minimum unit size, parking, and things like that that will limit density overall, but technically, the limit is limitless. The other is height. So the development can generally be the highest height that's available within a mile of the development site. So if you look a mile from downtown, the development could potentially be unlimited just with the FAA limitations to the, to the project. We've got about, I think we've got three Live Local projects that are in some stage of review right now. Two are on North Federal, just north of Sunrise. One is in the South Rack. The two on North Federal are in review and probably would be approved soon, based on what I've seen. The one on South Rack is still early in the process.
Anything that you're finding that you would classify as egregious in terms of alarm bells for the neighborhoods? Or, or is everything still sort of under control? Are the developers showing some respect in terms of, you know, what is gonna be happening in these neighborhoods? I mean, how are you finding these projects as you review them?
So I, I find that, you know, they don't always max out what they're able to get. Some are going higher than others. But at the end of the day, the projects need to make sense financially and for the neighborhood as well. I think one project in particular appears to be pretty tall. But I think once that area develops, based on what we currently allow on that area, which is up to about 200 feet, you know, that project will blend in a bit more with its surroundings. But right now, the height is, will be a little bit outstanding for what's currently there.
So other than those two examples that you mentioned, every other aspect of our code has to be met?
Correct.
And we don't have to worry about any of those issues?
Correct. And the trade-off for the city is 40% of those units in that development are dedicated to be affordable units, somewhere below market rate.
Right, so hopefully, we'll find the balance. And this will be not a bad thing, but we just don't know yet.
That's right.
Okay.
So where is that building located? That 200-foot building?
I think it might be proposed at 30 stories, and it is south of Broward Health, along South Andrews.
So 300 feet on South Andrews?
Yes.
Okay.
But what we changed our code to does, will allow with affordable units, because it's a bonus height, up to around 200 feet. So eventually, you'll probably see more things come in that area at a similar height.
Chris, isn't the FAA limitation 500 feet?
No, it's, it's whatever, it's typically about 500 feet in the downtown is what we're getting. But if they can get a letter from the FAA that says, in, in the downtown core, in the downtown rack, if they can get a letter that they can go higher, if it doesn't interfere with, with the FAA, they could go higher.
They could go higher, depending where they are and FAA's feedback.
That's correct.
For it, okay. And without the, in the downtown rack, without FAA exemption, is it five, is a standard 500? What's that?
Limitless.
It's limitless, okay. So.
So the, so the 500 feet is something like a rule of thumb that the city has been following for a number of years? And then someone woke up and said, hey, wait, maybe FAA is not so restrictive. And turns out, they're not.
Yeah.
And a lot of these developers are realizing that they can go higher and, and are. And, I mean, we're not going like Miami, which has over 1,000 feet. I think there's a building that, and they're right in the flight path of their airports, which that's really scary. But, but yeah, we're finding that FAA is, is pretty lenient now in terms of height.
Yeah, there's, there's two of them going up, down on Brickell that are gonna be 1,000 feet. So if, if we're limitless in our downtown, I don't see why we'd expect to be any different. We'll be seeing 1,000-foot buildings here at some point, too.
So couldn't we limit height if we wanted to in the downtown rack?
Could. Yeah, I mean, we'd have to work with legal and look at whether or not there's any sort of Burt Harris issues.
That's what I was gonna say. Don't you run into Burt Harris or anybody who's bought property with the expectation of being able to build to that level? We're gonna get sued, and we're gonna lose.
Yeah, so there may need to be a period of time where that's.
Right.
There may need to be a strategy, but we'd have to look at the legalities of it and what that, what that would be.
Yeah, but I mean, with, with zoning changes, you have to respect property rights. But then also, you can also implement changes that are foregoing in the future.
Yeah, prospectively.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, look at my attorney for any legal advice on that.
He says, don't look at me. So, so the way it works is prospectively right. If somebody, somebody has a parcel of land. For example, we read recently where someone bought a parcel of land in our downtown of Flagler Village for 7.7 million, I think, next to, no, no, 7.2?
I think 7.2.
On Third Street. So if we had changed the zoning, the previous owner, we would be, we would be responsible for respecting the, the height, the height limitation for the previous owner. But the new owner now would be subject to the new height limitation. And, and as long as property continues to be flipped, the new people have to be, have to respect any, if we were to.
Things that would affect how that affects individual property owners. But in the general sense, if you're taking a legislative action to change the zoning, they would need to comply with the new zoning unless they have a development permit that's in the works, that they've applied for and have certain expectations to the development standards for which they've purchased the property. So it, so it does become a case-by-case basis. But the larger, larger number of properties that are impacted by the change, the better the argument can be made in terms of the legislative decision of the city commission in regards to that.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Susan, sorry, thanks. This was, I know we went off on a tangent, but go ahead.
As you're through discussing that, I just have a short wrap-up. The committee would also appreciate city staff reviewing all of the recommendations in the report and providing feedback to us to address additional recommendations or modifications. And also, the committee is requesting that the commission meet with us for a joint workshop, perhaps quarterly, to follow the implementation of our recommendations and see the impact on the number of additional dwellings that are being created. And we certainly appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to more conversations.
And we certainly appreciate the commitment that everyone on the committee has made. And I know it's a volunteer task, and we thank you for the time and effort that you all put into, to providing the, the help that we need in making recommendations to staff and staff making recommendations to us for final policy implementation. I think that the recommendations are well-founded and certainly are due consideration. And I think whatever we can do to provide more incentives for affordable housing is what we need to be doing, because housing is not getting any cheaper. In your opening remarks, you talked about market forces are not really, not gotten us to where we need to go. There seems to be such, there seems to be continuous demand on existing market-rate housing. Although I have spoken to a number of developers in the last week who say that there's a bit of softening in the market. So maybe that's a trend, I don't know. But it's not going down, it's just leveling off. So we'll see where that goes. But there doesn't seem to be any, I don't see there's any sign as I, as we go up and down the streets of, of projects that are not being built. I see Fat, Fat Village is, is going gangbusters over there. And new condominium projects now are being, are being sold to the, to the community. So, I mean, it's, it's a blessing in disguise that, that we have, you know, a city that's as robust in its development. And hopefully, we can maintain the quality of life that many of us have come here to expect. And as Commissioner, as the Vice Mayor said, alluded to, he wants to make sure that any, any of these Live Local projects don't interfere in any egregious fashion with the quality of life of the single-family home neighborhoods that we have come to enjoy. But, you know, we don't want to see any holdback on redevelopment areas, especially in the Northwest, where it's finally kicked up some steam. And, you know, we don't want to see that fall apart because of any inactivity or inaction that the commission or the city staff would interfere with these projects. So we definitely want to see those things moving forward. So anyone else have any comments or questions of the, of the committee?
I'm gonna comment, just making sure with the request that the advisory board, recommendations that they put before us, that we are giving directives to move and to act on those recommendations. And also, that quarterly meeting, are we getting an answer to move forward with that?
Quarterly might be a little aggressive.
Love that word, aggressive.
If everyone asked for a quarterly, if everyone asked for a quarterly meeting, we wouldn't, we, it would be tough.
But we're the first asking. We're the first asking. You know, you give the, you give the brainchild the opportunity.
How about twice a year? Why don't we agree on twice a year?
Three?
Does that make sense?
What is a quarter? Four or three? You know, you know me, Mayor.
All right, we'll start with once a quarter, and we'll see how that goes.
All right. Okay, we'll see how that goes.
You might, you might be sick of us. I just want to say one thing about the setback recommendation. That's, that is not, that I'm concerned about, because if we start changing setbacks from the property lines, that's gonna interfere with our streetscape and our, and our, the pattern of development that we were trying to encourage in some of these more densely populated areas. So we should, need to be cautionary about that.
We did not address the setback portion of that incentive. We just addressed the parking.
Right, but you did mention it. And I want to, I, I, I thought I heard you say setbacks in your presentation, in, in your number.
Well, that's, that's incorporated in the long definition of what the state says we need to comment on.
Okay, all right.
But we declined, we were silent as far as that goes.
Okay, all right, okay, very good. Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Just to say thank you. Thank you, Susan, for sharing the effort. And thank you to the committee for all of your work. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mayor, if before we close, I don't know, the committee that I sit with, if there's anyone, Susan, does anyone that want to share at this point before we close out?
Yeah, anyone on the committee that wants to add to the comments, recommendations? Say how happy you are? say how happy you are? All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Workshop concluded.
And Mayor, as a reminder, we have the one o'clock in the Einstein Room, the executive session at one.